It is six o'clock. I call this meeting to order. Dr. Salazar, we have kids here for the pledge.
Yes, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, this evening we have students from Dora Romero Elementary and Los Fresnos Elementary here to help lead us in the pledge and to introduce them as the proud principals of both campuses. Mrs. Lucio.
Yes. Hi, good evening, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board and Dr. Salazar. As Dr. Salazar said, my name is Karina Lucio and I'm the proud principal of Dora Romero Elementary. This evening with us, we have two of our students from Dora Romero Elementary and I would like to present to you Joaquin Jackson Samora. I'm not Joaquin. I have Joaquin Jackson Samora and he is a first grade student at Dora Romero Elementary. He is the son of Joaquin Carlos Samora and Norma Burnia Samora. Joaquin is an A Honorable student and maintains excellent attendance. He has a passion for baseball and is a member of the Red Sox team for the Los Fresnos Little League. He also enjoys playing chess, reading books, and wrestling with his dad and younger brother. Joaquin plans to attend a military academy in hopes of becoming an officer to serve his country. We know his future endeavors will lead to great success. We also have, representing Dora Romero Elementary, we have Erani Castillo. Erani Castillo is a fourth grade student at DRE. She is the daughter of Iber Arroyo and Salvador Castillo. Erani is an A Honorable student and participates in many activities and clubs at DRE. She is currently a member of our DRE Choir, Coding Club, and EAE Oral Reading Team in her free time. Erani enjoys going outdoors and spending time with friends. She loves helping her mom cook and is ready to take over in the kitchen. She wants to attend and graduate from the University of Texas at Austin while she will later use her degree to fulfill her ultimate goal of becoming a lawyer. Erani has a very bright future ahead of her. I present to you Erani Castillo.
Hi, good evening, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, Dr. Salazar. My name is Veronica Grimaldo and I am also the proud principal of right next door, Los Fresnos Elementary. Today, I would like to introduce to you Renata Pesina. Renata is the daughter of Jose de Jesus and Evelyn Pesina. She's a first grade student at Los Fresnos Elementary. Renata is an A Honorable student and in school, her favorite subject is science. Just recently, she enjoyed learning about motion. This leads to her goal, to want to be a scientist when she grows older. To become a scientist, she wants to attend UTRGV so that she can stay close to home with her family. On her free time, she has been learning to play tennis with her dad's help. Ladies and gentlemen, I introduce to you our sweet and positive student, Renata Pesina. Next, I introduce to you Alexis Gabrielle Martinez, also known as Lexi. Lexi's proud parents are Gilbert and Amanda Martinez. Lexi's a fourth grade A Honorable student at Los Fresnos Elementary. Lexi's favorite subject is math. She thinks multiplication is a breeze. She enjoys the fun activities with Kahoot and Bookit when she is learning math. Her goal, when she finishes high school, is to pursue a career as a special ed teacher. She said, "My sister has autism and she has inspired me to help students like her." She would like to attend Baylor or Texas A&amp;M but prefers Texas A&amp;M so that she can stay a little bit closer to home. After school, Lexi has participated in the dance team, spelling bee, EAE, and even our morning announcement crew. In her community, she plays kickball with Tippecats and she's a Cowboys cheerleader. Ladies and gentlemen, I introduce to you our busy and goal-oriented Lexi.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead the pledge. Will everyone please rise, remove headgear, and put a pledge to lead it?
If you could remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. And thank you to the parents of these wonderful children. I know y'all are here. Thank you for bringing them out today. Thank you. Mr. Castillo, can you please take a roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Sandra Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Ruben Trevino?
Present.
I am here, Martín Castillo. Ms. Letice Quintero running a little bit late. Mr. Ray Farias? Mr. Jesús Amaya? Mr. Donald Henderson?
Present.
Dr. Gonzalo Salazar?
Present.
Our counsel, Ms. Leandro Ortiz.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda, our district recognitions. We have several tonight. I'll turn it over to you for introduction, Mr. Dr. Salazar.
Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, at every regular meeting, we set time aside to recognize the accomplishments of our students. And we begin this morning with some high school students and here to introduce them is Mr. Stumbel, the proud principal of Los Fresnos High School.
Good evening, Ms. Garcia, members of the board and Dr. Salazar. Tonight, we are going to recognize several of our best and brightest extracurricular involved students at Los Fresnos High School. We're going to start with some CTE industry certifications as we've done the past couple of months. I'm going to ask Mr. Rolando Gueda to the lectern to introduce the programs that will be recognized tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stumbel. Good evening, Madam President, Board members, Dr. Salazar. This month, CTE Department is proud to showcase three more industry-based certifications. I'll begin with Microsoft certification. Ms. Keller will be presenting on this certification. Ms. Keller is a business teacher at Los Fresnos United.
Good evening. My name is Ms. Keller. I teach Business Information Management I at LFU, Los Fresnos United. Students can earn industry-based certifications in Word and Excel. Students can benefit from earning a certification because they can list the certification on their resumes, job applications, and discuss during job interviews. They will have a competitive edge over other candidates applying for the same job. Last fall, seventy-nine students earned Microsoft Office Specialist Certificates. This spring, forty-nine earned MOSF word certifications. I project about twenty more MOSF Excel certifications will be earned before the end of this year. The salary student earns with a certificate versus without a certificate is dependent on the position, location, and company that hires the student. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Again, we do offer the students to come by, but at this time, they couldn't come by this time. But again, at the rate we're going, we're looking at close to two hundred certifications with all those in the Microsoft certification area. Next, we have Ms. Cantú Castillo from Los Fresnos High School presenting in two areas. Those two areas are Photoshop and Entrepreneurship.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. As Mr. Guevara said, I'm Esther Cantú Castillo. I teach digital media, one of the courses that I teach. And we've always offered an Adobe Photoshop Certificate. This last year, we actually incorporated the Adobe Certified Professional in Visual Design using Adobe Photoshop. So it's a new certificate with the Creative Cloud. The certificate increases their probability of getting hired in areas of web design, graphic design, photography, and journalism, to name a few. This past fall, we certified twenty-six students and we're going to have another twenty to thirty students certify in the spring. It's what, maybe more. We're hoping for more. We do have a group of kids here with us today. Oh, sorry. Victoria Alta Mirano. Kevin Prudencio. Andrew Robledo. Those are the three of the twenty-six. Okay. I also teach business management and this year, my students were a little bored and so I challenged them to pass the entrepreneurship and small business certification. They were a little upset in the middle of the whole thing, but they actually did really well. In a class of twenty-three, eleven passed that certification. I gave it to them the last six weeks. So it was a challenge because they had to do financial math, a little bit of accounting, profit and loss analysis, and so it was a little more detailed, real math is what I call it. This prepares students who decide to enter small business sector or pursue in a post-secondary education. Here is our first cohort for Los Fresnos ISD of entrepreneurship and small business. We have Mia Escalante. Carla Jiménez. Miguel Lozano. Sebastián Ortega. Juan Padron. And Armando Vega. So here we have six of our eleven that could make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cantú Castillo. As you can see, our students are in good hands with our teachers. Our teachers are experts in their field and they're able to transfer that knowledge to our students. Again, thank you, and again, we'll see you next month or similar.
Thank you. Just for the record, Ms. Letice Quintero has joined us. We can move on to the next.
As we continue our student recognitions, we're going to move into, we had a very successful, what I call, late fall, early winter season with some of the sports that we have going on. And to introduce the coaches and teams is our athletic director, head football coach, David Cantú.
Good evening, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, Dr. Salazar. An exciting day to be able to recognize three groups that really excelled. Absolute amazing accomplishments. And we'll get right to it, starting with our head girls' basketball coach, Alex Lucio, who's going to introduce the team. I might just throw in a little something there that a team, I believe Harlingen ended up winning district, but the team that went to Harlingen lost by fifty last year and came and went over there and upset them. That's the type of team they were. It was an amazing accomplishment and a playoff team in coach's first year. So Coach Alex Lucio.
Good evening, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. Thank you for having us here this evening. Today, I'm proud to be presenting our varsity girls' basketball team who advanced to the playoffs this year with an overall record of twenty-six and twelve. I'd like to first represent my varsity assistants. I have Coach Norma Peña. Coach Salazar. They have been a great asset to our success and I personally want to thank them for their hard work and commitment to our program. Just a couple of little highlights from this season. This year, we broke the school record for most points in the season. And how Coach Cantú was saying, we ended the drought of a twelve-year drought of losing to Harlingen High, so we got that W this year. So that was a big win for the program. Now, we'll be presenting our team and their individual awards for this season. Freshman Jesse Theresa Brisky. Sophomore Mia Hernández. Sophomore Valerie Presalini. Charlotte Jones couldn't be here. She had practice. Sophomore Charlotte Jones was thirty-two, six A Honorable Mention. Junior Karina Álvarez. Junior Aileen Ortega, thirty-two, six A Newcomer of the Year. Junior Marit Ortega, thirty-two, six A Second Team All-District. Junior Olivia Para, First Team All-District. Junior Alito Bar, thirty-two, six A Honorable Mention. Senior Gabby Garido, Honorable Mention. Senior Sarahe Jones, thirty-two, six A Offensive Player of the Year. Thank you all for having us here. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Coach Lucio, and thank you, girls' basketball team. Next, we have an amazing group of swimmers and divers who, not only both boys and girls won districts, multiple regional qualifiers, and quite a few who went to state. Coach Jaime Fettis, who's been with us for a while, will tell you more about it. Coach Jaime Fettis.
Good evening, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. I am the proud coach of our boys and girls' swimming and diving teams. It is an honor to share the accomplishments of these student athletes today. I'd like to thank God for his help and guidance on another safe and successful year. My wife and daughters for their love and support. Athletics is a partnership between the coach, the athletes, and the parents. So a big thank you for the parents for their support and cheers. And I'm looking forward to support next year. Our team accomplishments started off with having five swimmers qualify for the TSCA South Texas Championships, which is an early state swim meet. Key wins for our boys' teams were Harlingen Fall Splash and the Westaco Fall Fest. Key wins for our girls was the dual meet between Brownsville Veterans and the Pre-Regional Showcase. These victories led to one of the highlights of the year, which was going into Laredo ISD's brand-new aquatic center and coming home with the girls and boys. We got both the boys and girls La Copa Laredo Championship. We followed that up by defending both girls' and boys' district championships. We went on to respectfully earn regional girls' and boys' runner-ups, placing and sending the Super Six, as their newspaper called them, to state. In honor of our school motto, "What we do here shapes the world", I will share our athletes' career choice. I will start our student introduction with a young lady who has raised the bar for Los Fresnos Swimming. She broke thirteen records in the Upper and Lower Valley. And in San Antonio, at the TSCA Championships, she broke the fifty butterfly pool record, brought home the first-ever TSCA gold medal along with two silver and a bronze. She earned district and regional swim of the year honors, First Team All-District, First Team All-Valley, along with qualifying for state in four events. Los Fresnos Junior Swimming Co-Captain, Jada Ashford. She is in the A Honor Row and will be a future nurse practitioner. Freshman Angela Reynolds. Butterflyer, district honorable mention, regional qualifier, A Honor Row, and future pharmacist. I will ask if y'all can please do three claps because after I introduce, I will say their accomplishment to respect the board's time. Freshman Giannandis. Water polo, basketball, breaststroke, fifty-three, state qualifier in Skills USA Print Technology, future in fashion merchandising. Hopes to be the first female water polo college recruit here at Los Fresnos. Freshman Michelle Robledo. She's our team manager, very dependable, always willing to help. Future computer game programmer. Sophomore Josie Flores. Water polo, breaststroke, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A/B Honor Row, future Coast Guard. Sophomore Belén Martinez. Five-hundred swimmer, backstroke, A Honor Row, ranked fourth in her class, and future lawyer. Sophomore Lane Hoffert. Cheerleader, volleyball, track and field, long jump, diver, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A Honor Row, and future business owner. Junior Evangeline Wrinkle. Diver of the Year, Butterflyer, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A Honor Row, future museum curator. Junior Adriana Macías. Girls' team captain, TSCA qualifier, First Team All-District, First Team All-Valley, regional champion in the hundred freestyle, state qualifier, A Honor Row, and future physician assistant. Senior Valeria Rodríguez. Five-hundred freestyle, Butterflyer, Second Team All-District, future anthropologist. Senior Marilin Soriano. Water polo, two-hundred free, five-hundred free, two, Second Team All-District, A/B Honor Row, future lawyer. Senior Angela Loera. Fifty-three, breaststroke, TSCA qualifier, First Team All-District, First Team All-Valley, regional qualifier, state qualifier, A Honor Row, and future biochemist. Senior Rihanna Apasible. TSCA qualifier, First Team All-District, First Team All-Valley, regional qualifier, state qualifier, A Honor Row, and is ranked ninth in her class. And future marine biologist. Now, our boys. Freshman Daniel Canales. Coast Country Team, breaststroker, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A Honor Row, future mechanical engineer. Freshman Sebastian Salcedo. Water polo, two-hundred freestyle, five-hundred freestyle, future DPS trooper. Freshman Ricardo Nojosa. Football player, water polo, fifty freestyle, A Honor Row, future game warden. Jonas Apasible. First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A Honor Row, ranked seventh in his class, and future psychiatrist. Sophomore Daniel Castro. Individual medley, breaststroke, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A/B Honor Row, future veterinarian. Sophomore George Ontiveros. Five-hundred freestyler, future business marketing. Sophomore Michael Ramírez. First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A/B Honor Row, future aerial space engineer. Sophomore Christopher Reynolds. One-hundred freestyler, Butterflyer, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, Honor Row, future architect. Sophomore Diego Viera. Water polo, two-hundred freestyle, five-hundred freestyle, future border patrol agent. Junior Diego Gámez. Five-hundred freestyle, district honorable mention, regional qualifier, future pharmaceutical rep. Junior Christian Ramírez. Water polo, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A/B Honor Row, future graphic designer. Senior Jayden Cruz. Water polo, TSCA qualifier, district swimmer of the year, new record holder in the one-hundred butterfly, and member of the Twenty-One Fifty Freestyle Club. First Team All-District, regional qualifier, state qualifier, future mechanical engineer. Senior Luis Isagui. Water polo, two-hundred freestyle, backstroke, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, future general surgeon. Senior Angelo López. Coast Country, track, water polo, Butterflyer, district diver of the year, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, state qualifier, future educator. Senior Fernando Ramírez. Water polo, backstroke, team co-captain, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A Honor Row, future lawyer. And senior Dominic Hernández. Boys' water polo, swim team and water polo boys' captain, breaststroke, First Team All-District, regional qualifier, A Honor Row, state qualifier in Skills USA Print Technology, future business finance manager. And that concludes. I would just like to end by thanking all of the seniors and telling you, you will be missed. And remember, once a falcon, always a falcon. And you will always have a home here in Los Fresnos. And you will always, whatever you need, we'll be here for you.
Anybody else? We've got one more picture over here, guys. All right. Thank you, Coach Pettis, and thank you, swim team. That was awesome. That was awesome. Next, we have another outstanding group who had amazing accomplishments in wrestling. We had multiple regional qualifiers and a couple of kids who went to state. Our head coach is Roland Gomez, and he'll get to introduce them to you. Roland Gomez.
Good evening, Mrs. Garcia, members of the board, and Dr. Salasad. I'm here tonight to present to you this year's regional wrestling qualifiers. We're able to have a total of ten, seven boys and three girls represent Los Fresnos at the regional tournament, two of which moved on to continue competing at the state tournament. I want to begin by introducing and thanking my assistant coaches, Eloy Guerrero and Carlos Rivas, for all their hard work and dedication for the wrestling program. Now, moving on to our regional qualifiers, I'd like to first start off with our boys. Senior Tiago Almeida. Tiago was a three-time state qualifier. He was our team captain, and he ended up finishing eighth overall in the state of Texas in his weight class. In the one hundred and thirteen pound weight class, we have Senior Diego Lozoya. In the one hundred and twenty pound weight class, we have sophomore Nathan Davila. In the one hundred and twenty-six pound weight class, we have Junior Justin Haramio. Not present today was Sean Rodriguez in the one hundred and thirty-two pound weight class. In the one forty-five pound weight class, we have freshman Sinuea Medina. And at the one hundred and eighty-two pound weight class, we have Senior Isaac Joseph. Now, our ladies. In the one hundred and ten pound weight class, we have Junior Girete Moreno. In the one hundred and nineteen pound weight class, we have Junior Alicia Solis. And in the one hundred and eighty-five pound weight class, we have Junior Katie Reyes, who was also our state qualifier this year, finished top twelve in the state of Texas in her weight class. Thank you. Thank you, wrestling team, and thank you, Coach Gomez. And once again, thank you so much for recognizing our student athletes. They work so hard all year and really do make our community proud. Thank you so much.
Okay, we move on to item number six, public audience. We do not have anybody signed up. Item number seven, public comment. No one has signed up for that as well. So, item number eight, district reports. Dr. Salasad, I'll turn it over to you.
This is Garcia, members of the board. This evening, we present you the monthly reports on finance. Does anyone have any questions regarding our financial reports? If there are none, then we...
I do have one that I was supposed to call on, and I forgot. There's a one big check for one point three to Gomez Mendez signs. Is that for the percentage of the middle school? Okay. Thank you. That was all I had.
Thank you. Early childhood literacy and math goals and CCMR goals. At our last meeting, we presented a report on CCMR goals, and this week, we bring you information on early childhood literacy and math goals as well. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
If there are no questions, then we'll move on to our Dual Language Academy, a brand-new initiative that we are piloting this year and will completely roll it out next year. Here to tell us about it is Mrs. Amato, Executive Director for Support Services. She's got a cheer squad.
Glad you're excited.
Let me start as we start setting up. This will not be possible with the help of our team here, the three strategists, starting with Mrs. Araceli Sanchez, Mrs. Henderson, Cynthia Espinoza, and also with Mrs. Villarreal, Ana Villarreal, as part of the Support Services team that's always looking for challenging curriculum or ideas to bring to our English learners here in our district. So, this is the new initiative. It's a dual language program, and tonight, I'm going to review what dual language is and what is our goal and our vision for Los Fresnos for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. To start off with, I'm just going to give you a little bit of background, a little bit of insight of our region and the state of Texas. Let me also start by letting you know what EB... You're probably going to hear me through the presentations say EB or EP, but EB is emergent bilingual. The state has moved. Remember, many years ago, we used to use LEP, Limited English Proficient Students? And the state pretty much said, "Well, we're not limited. Our bilingual students are not limited." So, they changed into English language learners. So, this time now, there's another change, and the state is saying, "Well, now, we're emergent bilinguals," right? So, they're emerging into a second language. And you hear me say EP, that's English proficient. So, those are students who are proficient in the English language. So, we do a comparison here between Region One, and as we know, Region One extends from Brownsville all the way from Laredo, in comparison to the state of Texas. So, just in Region One, we have thirty-eight percent of bilingual students being served in Region One of our student population, compared to the district, who's at twenty percent of English learners. We also see that out of those thirty-eight, eleven percent are duly quoted as emergent bilingual and being served in the special education. In Texas, eight percent of the twenty percent are receiving also special education services. We also see that in Region One, the languages that we serve, it's fifty-three percent of our population is Spanish, forty-six percent in English, and then we have others. There's sixty different languages just here in Region One, compared to Texas, ninety percent Spanish. We see other, seven point two other languages. And in the state of Texas, there's a hundred and twenty languages spoken in public education. So, there's a comparison. We also see the state, the Region One, in the lower part, where you have a number one, and we could see that there's thirty-eight percent of our students that are being served there. So, here in the state of Texas, there's different modules, there're different language programs, starting with our bilinguals, which is our pre-K through fifth grade. We have early exit, late exit, and then we have dual language. Here in Los Fresnos, we have an early exit program. Pretty much, our goal has been that our students between three to five years that are being served in bilingual education, that we exit our students, but also known as reclassify them, to being EP, English proficient. What we are looking at in our new initiative is looking at dual language two ways. So, one way is meaning that there's only one language in that classroom. It could be just Spanish, and they're learning English. In a two-way, it's two languages being learned simultaneously. So, it's English and Spanish, with participants from being English proficient and emergent bilingual. So, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about that. The state and overall, what research says, that the best program to have in any school district is a two-way program. And my goal today is to give you some highlights of what dual program we are thinking or we want to bring over to our district. So, just a little bit more program models. We see that thirty-one percent are pullout, and we highlighted that because in their secondary campuses, sixth grade up to twelve, we have the pullout model with ESL. And then, right now, in our elementary, we have fifteen percent... Well, we have our bilingual early exit, which here, fifteen percent of the state is using bilingual early exit. Six percent is dual language immersion two-way program. We are very blessed here in our district to have teachers who are certified bilingual education. As we've been conducting some research and speaking to other districts throughout the state, we find that there's districts, either there's a teacher shortage, or they do not have enough teachers who are certified as bilingual teachers. So, we're going to see some numbers in just a bit. Dual language in Region One, these are all campuses that are serving or having a program in dual language throughout the region. We still have some San Minitos, not all campuses in BISD or in San Minitos. Most of them are piloting the program. But our vision here in Los Fresnos is to have dual language in all pre-K and kinder classes in all of our nine elementary campuses here. So, looking at our Texas funding, we do receive bilingual education allotment. And just here, just a comparison, right now, since we're in the star, where it says point ten, we receive a wait average of one point ten percent or point ten for any student who is participating in the bilingual program. Going dual, that would mean that our English learners or our EBs going to two-way, instead of point ten, we would receive a point fifteen. And what's interesting as well is those English proficient students, right now, we have in our pre-K or from pre-K to fifth grade, our English proficient students are... We are not receiving any funding for those students who are in that bilingual classroom. So, right now, we have bilingual students, regular students being served in the same classroom. We do not receive any funding for those English proficient students. If we would go to two-way, the state will also provide a point zero five for those students participating in that program, in comparison to right now, where we're receiving zero. So, looking at our emergent bilingual population, we have a total enrollment as a total in the district, but our EB enrollment is two thousand two hundred and eighty. So, twenty-one percent of our students are being served in the emergent, our emergent bilingual students. So, looking at information from our bilingual and ESL educators, I know we presented this at our last board meeting on Tapper. We looked at, here in our district, we have nineteen point six percent of our teachers are bilingual or ESL certified education. That's a hundred and thirty point five teachers. Compare that to the state, where the state is at six point two. That's where we hear from our colleagues across the state saying, "We don't have enough teachers to run a program like you all are looking into in Los Fresnos." So, I believe that we're truly blessed to have teachers who seek certification to best serve our students. So, the difference between transition bilingual to what we have now versus dual language to what we are proposing for next year, starting with, I've mentioned, the early exit. So, the goal there in the early exit program is that students be served between three to five years. And the goal is saying that between the third year to the fifth year, we're already exiting or reclassifying students to be English proficient. We're looking at doing one in early transition, we're looking at their first language and changing it to their second language. So, it's mostly here at our district, going from Spanish to English, right, learning English. In dual language and the two-way program, we're serving two students. We're serving the English proficient and the emergent bilingual. So, it's a curriculum that's going to be fifty-fifty, right? So, both, the English proficient is learning Spanish, and the emergent bilingual is learning English simultaneously, they're working on it together. So, even when they reclassify, if they were to exit the program, they continue their education in dual language, because we want them to graduate as bilingual, biliterate, and bicultural, with a literacy of bilingualism when they graduate. That is our goal in the future. So, like anything, we had to do some research base, so we're not just, you know, going out there and saying, "We're going to do this." So, I figured that there's an importance of having a face to a name. So, this is... Our dual language program is research-based on the work of Dr. Wayne Thomas and Dr. Virginia Collier. So, let me explain this just a bit. This is probably the one that's going to take me a little longer, because I think there's a lot of good information here. As we look at it, and we look at the fifty percentile, so mostly in the fifty is saying that our reading levels of English second language learners, pretty much as we're looking at the fifty, and I want you to look at the orange, where it says the thirty-five in the star. So, Dr. Collier and Dr. Thomas, they did a longitudinal study, and what they did is they took students from first grade to graduation, and they studied them all for those twelve years and say, "In all these programs that are out there, how are their performance? Which is the best program to enroll them?" So, their studies showed that from first to third grade, if we look at, see, everyone is increasing, all programs are going up. What's important there to see is that those are the first three years. Those are their basic interpersonal communication skills, they're social skills, right? So, we see all students increasing. What happens between the fourth year and as we progress through the years, either they become stagnant or some of them start increasing. What happens is now their vocabulary, the academic language, is now harder for them. So, the basic, they were being very successful at the beginning, their basic language is good, now we're shifting it, it's getting a little bit more intense as the grade progresses, more academic language, and that is where they're having difficulty. That's what's evident right now in our schools. We see a lot of students being reclassified in third grade, pretty much in fourth grade. Once they go to fifth and further, it's very difficult. You've heard me before talk about LTLs, your Long Term ELLs. So, pretty much, that academic language hasn't been built in their first language or in the new language, so they are experiencing some difficulties as the years progress. So, that shows there that the early exit, those students who were studied, they had a... They met only the thirty-five percentile. But if you look at the sixty-one to sixty-two, those are the students that were enrolled in dual language. So, they were learning two languages, strengthening their first language and working on the second language. They went to a sixty-one to a sixty-two percentile. So, this is something that we want to bring, that we want to offer opportunities for our students, and it's going to... We're not going to see it in pre-K to the first two years. It's something that builds, and as we build on this program, we're going to know that their students are going to be successful. So, we know that the stronger the academic and cognitive their first language is, the stronger their second language. So, we have to build that foundation with their first language. What's our dual language program goals? So, we want to become bilingual, biliterate, and bicultural by fifth grade. That's our goal. We want to increase academic achievement in all areas, and we want to develop fluency in communication and literacy in both English and Spanish. So, we know that literacy and content will be available in two languages. We're considered... It's considered an additive bilingual program. We're adding another language instead of subtracting a language, and we want to start this in pre-kinder and kinder, start the foundation. So, again, the students will be bilingual, fluent in both languages, they'll be biliterate, they will be able to read and write in both languages, and they will be bicultural, able to combine two cultures while keeping their identity. Just some points here, some features and other research that we have looked into or read, is that our program will be project-based, some of them, project-based instruction. Teachers teach the top twenty-five percent of the class. Teachers teach the top twenty-five percent of the class. And the way we, we envision is as we're reading, uh, there's, there will be a lot of grouping. There will be a lot of peer buddies or partner buddies. And the goal is to, when we have an English proficient and emergent bilingual, there'll be a high, medium, medium, low. We build partners, a high with a medium, medium with a low. And the teacher will always teach to the top twenty-five percent. Never watering it down to the students, the medium, the low students. But always having those expectations that we're gonna teach to the top twenty-five percent. There'll be a high levels of literacy in both languages in the classroom, that's rich with print in both languages, books, literacy, plenty of that in all classrooms. Some of the, some of the benefits of having that brain and how our brain functions with two languages, we have strong thinking skills, uh, increasing reading comprehension, and I thought this was interesting, resilience to Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia. So in the long run, knowing two languages, we're stronger here. Uh, continuing with other dual program models, we, there's a competitive, competitive edge in the global market. We know that our workforce, and as we travel further north, our workforce is, is asking for bilinguine or bilingual students, that they know two languages. We're looking at high levels of academic achievement, and also that confidence and self-esteem that, you know what, "I know two languages." En español, como si valgo por dos, right? Because I speak two languages. So this is something that, this is our, our, our schedule, just I wanted to provide a schedule. How does this look like in a classroom? So here we have a whole week, and if you just, um, let me explain this. So Monday and Tuesday, you see it in blue, those will be our English days. So the only difference here between Monday and Tuesday and Thursday and Friday is that every day we must do English, RLA, Reading Language Arts, and Spanish Language Arts, because they're totally different. We must teach both, the Reading Language Art and the Spanish Language Art simultaneously, every day. Um, but all the, all the other content areas, math, science, and social studies from Monday and Tuesday, they will be taught all in English. Bilingual centers, those in purple that go across, those have opportunities for students to be, to be, uh, provided in both languages. So as students are rotating and teachers working on the bilingual centers, every center is a different language. On Wednesday, the purple, that's our bridging day. Pretty much where we covered Monday and Tuesday, we're going to bridge it with the vocabulary and get them ready for Thursday and Friday. Because this doesn't mean that we're going to teach again where we taught Monday and Tuesday. This is an extension, but now we're gonna do it, we're gonna continue our learning in Spanish. So Wednesday is our bridging date. Start making those connections between one language and the other, using those cognates, and get them ready for Thursday and Friday. Because on Thursday and Friday, our content areas are now in Spanish.
This is a model, can we clarify, um, is, and so this model is what we're following in the bilingual classrooms, right?
Right now, we are not following this model, because right now we're offering Spanish as a support. We're helping them, but we're not following this model. Because in this model, all students will receive math. For example, on Monday and Tuesday, they will receive math all in English. And then all students will receive Thursday and Friday in English, in Spanish.
Correct, but the dual language model is gonna be practiced in our bilingual classrooms. We'll still have the regular.
Correct, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, yes. In pre-K, K, we'll follow this, and first through 5th grade, we'll continue with our current model. And then start building up on it year after year as we're going.
In all bilingual classrooms.
In all bilingual classrooms. Content and curriculum, students learn the same curriculum as general education classrooms. So I know we're work, we've been working with the Office of Academics and Mrs. Laundrie and all their strategists to ensure that, but they're learning across the hall in the regular classroom. Those English proficient students in the, in the dual language are also learning the same. Um, same test scores, same homework, everything remains the same. The only thing in that classroom is they're learning two languages. So we brought this, this, uh, dual language program in front of our ta, our stakeholders, and those are our teachers. So we brought them in this very, very room early in February, and we talked about dual language. And this is just a wordle, of all the words, we asked for feedback, and they did a, um, just giving us some input. They knew that, um, this was important. They knew that we needed, there were parents out there that really want this dual language. However, we also have the other side, who, parents we need to start talking to and, and ensuring, what is important, why is this important, what is the benefit for students? They know that they're ready for it, they're saying, "We're ready. Uh, it's about time we bring this, we should have brought it sooner." Uh, we know that it's gonna be a lot of work, but we know that the district is going to be here to support us. And definitely that's what we're looking into, providing support, starting the summer and all through the year as they work with, with this new program. There was a principal, um, in that, in that meeting, and said, "Well, why don't we bring this for everyone, starting from pre-K to 5th grade?" It's like, "Okay, easy." You know, we have to start slow, and we have to start it at the bottom to build that foundation as we move forward. But there, there's a lot of excitement, and I'm, I'm thankful for that they know that this is important for our students. So what is it, just a couple of pictures, uh, the classroom. There will be a lot of environmental print there in both languages, English and Spanish. Uh, I'm thinking that they're gonna need more walls. Uh, I don't know how we're gonna do that, right? But it's, the, the classroom needs to be print-rich. There has to be words, vocabulary, all in both languages. They're gonna be writing across content areas in two languages. Um, their learning centers, as I explained, will be in both languages. And they're gonna have a learning partner, or a learning buddy. Because the English proficient and the English emergent bilingual are gonna work side by side and be partners through this, through this journey. So we went ahead and said, "Okay, looking at the dual language, how does this tie in to the profile of a graduate?" So we took out the four, uh, the profile of a graduate as for lifelong learners. Well, we know there's gonna be a global, they're gonna be global and marketable. They're gonna be competent and competitive. They're gonna be future-ready innovative thinkers and leaders, uh, confident, creative, conscientious citizens, bicultural, diverse, and cross-cultural. And we know they're gonna be effective communicators, because they're gonna be bilingual, bilinguine, and they're gonna be empowered with that second language. And what, the meaning of our needs and what are we trying to do is we're going, trying to meet that diverse learner into the cognitive, their affective, and their linguistic abilities, and make him a better student and more competitive in this global, global environment that they will go out there and, and compete. So I thank you once again, I could not do this without our team here that's very supportive. Those are their, they're the number one advocates for bilingual students here in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amado, and thank you ladies for being here and being so supportive. Does anyone on the board have a question? You know, I like the idea of having it for everybody. Because if we had, my daughter would not be paying for Spanish lessons right now. You have a question, Remen?
Yes, so Ms. Amado, so yes, initially, I'm thinking the same thing, slow down. But, yeah, it would be great if we ended up, is that the vision for this? To have more, or carry that through the district and not just for, for bilingual, uh, people? How does a parent, how does, how does the child get enrolled into this program?
So what we're doing is, we have already, uh, set up some, some presentations, because I think it's important that parents know about this program. So we have three presentations scheduled, I think it's the twenty-third, twenty-four, twenty-fifth, that will be out in campuses during the evening and asking, or pretty much making a presentation to our parents on the importance. We're being ready, getting ready for enrollment, as soon as enrollment opens on, uh, April the 4th, then we'll start getting students into the enrollment. They will have to be, um, I'm hoping, that as other districts in the northern, northern Texas, there's a waiting list, because there's, we have to have a fifty-fifty in every classroom. So it's not gonna be open for all, it's gonna be, as long as we have fifty percent of our students are ABs and fifty percent are EPs, we'll be able to offer it to those students. There also have to be a test, because remember, we have to have the mine, high, medium, medium, low to ensure that some of these students will have to take a test and say, "Yes, you qualify to come into this program."
And so right now, we're looking at pre-K through 3rd grade?
No, pre-K through kinder.
Through kinder. Thank you. See, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, so hopefully next, the following year, we'll move over to 1st grade. Not hopefully, we will move over to.
There you go. Thank you.
Great job, ladies.
Thank you. We move on now to item number nine, Consent Agenda. We have three items on Consent Agenda. I'll take a, if anybody wants to pull anything, let me know. If any of the board members wanna pull an item. Otherwise, I will take a motion on Consent Agenda. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approved Consent Agenda is written on today's agenda.
Thank you, do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, thank you. All those in favor of passing Consent Agenda as listed, please raise your hand. Uh, Mr. Fadilla? All those in favor of passing Consent Agenda, we're, okay. Mr. Maya did raise his hand, right? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, Action Items. The first item is to discuss and take action to approve substantial completion of CSP number twenty dash twenty-one dash thirty-two. That's the Los Fresnos CSD High School re-roofing, replacement. Do I have a motion? From the board? Mr. Armaya? Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Trevino. Are there any questions or discussions? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving substantial completion, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. Item number two, Discuss and Take Action as Required Under Texas Government Code 2254 for the District to Provide a Written Statement and Finding of the District's Need for Specialized Contingent Fee Legal Services for Delinquent Tax Collection Services. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Armaya, do I have a second? Thank you, Lepisha. Are there any questions on the motion, or any discussion? There being no questions, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Are you understanding, nothing? Oh, okay, okay, the motion passes unanimously. On this next one, let's all try to raise our hand at the same time. Um, so I'll try to vote together.
Sorry.
Okay, item number three, Discuss and Take Action to Renew Agreement Contract for Delinquent Tax Collection Services to Lineberger, Gogan, and Sampson LLP. Do I have a motion? Mr. Gasteel?
Take action to renew agreement contract for delinquent tax collection services to Lineberger, Gogan, and Sampson LLP.
Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Trevino. Are there any questions, discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, item number four, Discuss and Take Action Authorizing Administration to Create the Position of Assistant Special Service Director and Assistant Technology Director for the 2021-2022 School Year. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Trevino?
Madam Chair, I move that the board authorize the administration to create the positions of Assistant Special Services Director and Assistant Technology Director for the 2021-2022 School Year.
Do I have a second on the motion, Mr. Gasteel? Are there any questions or any discussions? There being no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Discuss and Take Action to Approve the Superintendent's Personnel Recommendations for the Following Positions. For the 2021-2022 School Year, we have a Media and Public Relations Coordinator. Do I have a motion from the board? Mr. Gasteel?
Motion to approve that.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Trevino? Are there any questions on the motion? There being no questions, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. Is she here? Mrs. Neto, or Victoria, hi. Thank you, and welcome, welcome to the board. Good to have you. That is all for action items. Um, we do not, uh, go into closed session. Dr. Sossad, do we have any announcements that you'd like to make?
This is, I see, I'm members of the board, only two announcements on Monday, March 14th through March 18th. We suspend normal operations for spring break. And then our regular school board meeting will be held here at 6:00 PM on Monday, April 11th. Those are all the announcements we have.
Thank you, anything else on the board? It is 7:06, and I adjourn this meeting.